All right, I will call to order the closed session meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council of the City of Victorville. First item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council? If no one, I will go ahead and turn it over to our city attorney to address items for closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McCookren. We have seven items on the agenda this evening for closed session, one for the redevelopment agency, the other for the city council. However, with respect to those items, the code sections are referenced with respect to the existing litigation, the parties and the lawsuits are referenced as well. However, in addition, I have a request to add two additional items as urgency matters pursuant to government code 54954.2B2. They would both be closed session items. The first would be personnel matters pursuant to government code 54957. In order to add these items, we need to make a finding that the issues arose after the posting of the agenda and there's immediate need with respect to the personnel matter. Issues have arisen with respect to the city manager. It pertains to the city manager and his ability to perform his duties, and there's an immediate need for direction in order to avoid potential breaches of his contract. With respect to the other item, it is existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9A. Existing litigation is between Victorville versus VBLLP and the Lamar Companies under litigation, the litigation number is CIV 1002132. Here we have upcoming a motion for reconsideration that is due on the 25th, and in order to oppose that, we have to have our opposition papers due by January 11th. We realize some information subsequent to the posting of the last agenda needs some immediate direction as to how to proceed. So you would have to make the findings with respect to both items, assuming you were able to add those.
All right, I'll go ahead and move the findings.
Second.
Voting yes, Mike.
Oh, tab. Right here?
As always, to the extent there is reportable action at the conclusion of the closed session, we will report it at the, either the end of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular session.
Time to vote? Oh, tab.
She already voted.
Oh, okay.
Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. Have our city attorney report any items out of closed session?
Thank you, Ma'am McCookren. There are no reportable actions with respect to the closed session items previously discussed at this time.
All right, if you all please join us for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilman Rothschild and our pledge of allegiance by Captain Cliff Reynolds.
All right, thank you for this day, and especially thank you for this country and this great city of ours. Touch each of our minds and hearts this evening as we make decisions in your behalf and not our selfish ends. Amen.
Hello? I had the pleasure or the unfortunate experience of being involved in quite an ordeal here locally in Victorville. And, you know, I always know that Victorville's finest, they're all back there, sitting in the back row, does such a great job, but when you experience it firsthand, it's quite an amazing, thrilling experience. My wife and I were coming back from lunch and pulling out onto Palmdale Road, out of the abandoned Shell gas station, and the traffic was stopped and we had all these deputies just running across, chasing a young gentleman, and I think he was in gray sweats, and he made a right-hand churn and started running right for our car. And that was a little bit of a scary experience. My wife reached over and made sure that the door was locked, but as he made that right-hand churn, so did a deputy right behind him, and you pulled a gun, which I thought was real, but it actually ended up being a taser gun, and took him down. And I just, I wanted to thank you guys for doing such a great job. You are all such professionals, and this council, this city, is better off because you're on the streets protecting and looking out for our best interest and our public safety. So I applaud you. My hat's off to you. We all need to give them a round of applause. Please stand and be recognized. Thank you, gentlemen, and remind me, who was the one that actually fired the shot? Good shot. You nailed him right in the back, and he went down. So again, thank you guys very much. We greatly appreciate all you do. Okay, now we'll move into our agendas. The Library Board of Trustees. Any revisions?
No revisions. Mayor McCookren, public comment period.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping right over that. Yes, we do have public comment. And I have several cards here. The first one I have is from Tim Lynch. Public comment.
Tim Lynch, 632 South Hope Avenue, Ontario, California. I just came up to speak a little bit regarding the outdoor advertising ordinance in the city of Victorville. To date, the city has an ordinance in place that's a total prohibition on new billboards. A little bit of history, I first came up here to do some work about 25 years ago. The planning director at the time was a gentleman by the name of John Nattick. The city, after it incorporated, had put a total prohibition on billboards. A number of local businesses, and a few years after that fact, said, hey, a few billboards out there on that freeway might get some people off of that freeway to spend a little money in our community. Those leaders then asked the council to adopt an ordinance, which they did, which allowed for a few billboards to be built on the freeway. During the course of the next few years, many local businesses advertised on those billboards and brought business into the community, increased revenue, increased tax dollars. They were a positive for the community. About three or four years ago, the city, without any public outcry or any reason that I'm aware of, decided to do another total prohibition. The preceding 10 years to that prohibition, there was maybe three or four billboards built, more billboards removed than were built. It was a negative growth, if that's a positive term to use, for billboards. Why the prohibition was put in place, I'm not quite sure. However, it is just another nail in the coffin for businesses to try to stifle the ability of a business to sell their products. I assume all communities want to sell their homes instead of having theirs vacant. They want to sell their products that they put for sale. These structures help do that. They help local businesses, they help the city, they help the county, they help the state. God knows the state needs it. We'd all win if we can increase business. All we're asking the city council is just to take another review of what's in place today and see if it doesn't make sense to consider some new ideas to help all our local businesses and all of us try to get out of this horrendous recession. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Fisher?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. Harley Davidson of Victorville has used billboard advertising almost since we've been here, since late 1993. This last year contributed to almost a half a million dollars of off-the-freeway revenue over the course of the year. Two years ago, we brought an official state rally from Harley Davidson. We brought, what, 5,000 people up here who filled all our hotels and aided our restaurants. We have the Laughlin River Run every year, and they use that billboard as an opportunity to take the time to safely exit the freeway. Yes, once they see us, they can attempt to get off, but it's difficult and it takes them very far to get off the freeway. So our billboard advertising, especially during one of the worst times, all of you, all of us have experienced an incredible time doing business in the last four years, and our business revenue is down, and the revenue we get off of the freeway and from bringing new customers into the area to see what Victorville's all about, so they understand it's more than a stop on the way to Las Vegas, so it's a true community. It's become invaluable to us, and all the billboard advertising I know that's been here in the 19 years that I've been doing business here has helped bring a great deal of revenue to our community, and I think it's critical. It would severely impact our business, which has already been hit very hard. We have some of the worst unemployment in the country, and we've just had a tough time up here. But we love our community. We've been up here, we're part of the community, and our billboard has been a serious part of our income, and I'm just begging you to consider that when you think about taking these down. I thank you for your time and thanks for serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mick Summers?
Mayor and City Council. My name is Mick Summers. I'm a property owner of acreage on Armegosa Road and between Armegosa Road and the I-15 freeway. Have a sign on our property, and we really need to consider that we can keep those signs when we develop the properties out. About 10 years ago, I came to the city council with somebody that was going to, we were going to develop that property out, and the sign became a big issue of that, and therefore we didn't develop that property, which would have been developed by now. I also own and a huge taxpayer in Victorville. I own the Armegosa Town Center, 33,000 square foot center on Armegosa Road that I've been paying taxes for 30 years on. I own large parcels on the I-15 and Bear Valley Road, also DJ Sports Bar and Grill, which is not in the city, but, so you know I'm a business owner up here. And I just can't see the reason why that can't, why you have to tear down a sign on a piece of property just to develop it out. It can easily be developed with that sign on there, and it's given us some revenue right now, and also the sign is great exposure for this city, as you just heard the gentleman of Harley Davidson say. So I would really appreciate if you could, would consider that ordinance on the signs, that we could keep the signs even, and develop out the property. I really believe we would have already had at least a 15, 20, 30,000-foot development on that property right now if we had years ago been able to work around that sign issue. I think maybe some of your plan, planning department might still remember that if they've been, you know, if they've been around for quite a while. I also have some notes here. For clarity, I'd like to read if I could.
Mr. Summers, you have...
Is there enough time?
30 seconds left.
What?
30 seconds.
Oh, I can't do it in 30 seconds, but...
You could leave the notes with...
I think you've got the drift of what we're talking about, and I sure appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Todd Porter?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Todd Porter. I'm the general manager and vice president of Lamar Advertising over this area. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. You've heard the concerns of both the landowner here in the valley and a prominent business owner who really value what billboards have to offer, both to them as an entity and indirectly to the city as a tax base. You know, Victorville has worked really hard to have a business-friendly climate and have a climate that encourages investment. That investment creates revenue that funds, go towards revenue for funds that create quality of life, police, roads, parks. The restrictions on developing and relocation really hurt these goals. I think it's pretty obvious. Mr. Fisher explained why he advertises on billboards. His billboard is scheduled to come down. It will come down. And as it stands, we run 100% occupancy from the Cajon Pass all the way to Adelanto. There is no place to replace his ad, as it stands. So until some other person goes away that has an ad open up to his advantage, he's going to lose out during that time period. We aren't asking for any new billboards. We would easily accept a cap on the number of billboards that currently exist in the city. We don't have any desire to proliferate billboards. We just want to keep what we have for the benefit of our customers and our landowners and for the city. We are asking the council specifically to set a new pro-business policy that draws experience from other communities, and the policy should be adopted, we feel, before any more billboards come down locally. We respectfully ask the city to take a 60-day pause from any further action that would result in billboards being torn down and allow the new council to reevaluate the city's billboard ordinance and policies and set a policy that promotes business. In addition to the people that have spoken today, I have some letters from other local landowners and businesses that ask that we submit this to you tonight. During this pause, it won't cost any money to the city. We just want the time to present some options to you for your consideration outlining possible reforms to the ordinance. Thank you and have a great evening.
All right, thank you. Jerry Laws? Jerry?
Ask him if I'm talking about what you're talking about.
It says you wanted to talk on a public comment. It doesn't say what it's about.
Oh, okay, so it's open to the whole thing, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. First of all, gratulations on your new appointment to mayor. And Rudy, you're still here. Haven't been called home to heaven yet. And Alice, I voted for you. We're expecting you to see what we can do about this airport situation over here and the prison situation. And where's Jim Kinney? Kennedy, I voted for you too, okay? Now, and Michael, you're here for a little while longer to see if we can clean up the situation here in this country, in our little city here, which ain't so little anymore. And I don't understand whether we get any revenue or going to get any revenue from the airport or whether we're going to turn that completely back over to the airport. I'd like to know about that. And secondly, I went to the management to get something painted, some lines painted on the Bear Valley Road, and I went five times, maybe it was six times. I looked later, and it doesn't look like it's been repainted, but, and it's visible, but my wife had someone, she was going bowling over at the Victor Valley Bowl, and she went over the bridge, we live on this side, other side the freeway, going Bear Valley Road, and the people that are supposed to turn left going north, and you can see they got an arrow there, you're supposed to turn left. Evidently, the person decided he wanted to go straight ahead, and so he went straight ahead and almost hit her. If she hadn't seen it out of the view mirror, you know, she wouldn't have, she would, might have hit him. So it's not that bad paint job, but the line in front where you're supposed to stop, that's not too clear. So it'd be nice if they can get that in their schedule this year, maybe get another heavy paint job on that little section where you turn north onto I-15 from Bear Valley Road. That would be appreciative. Now, you all know the country's in a mess, the counties are in a mess, and the states are in a mess, and the government belongs to the people, and the closest to the people is the local government, you folks and us. So let's see if we can't put, and I'm sure you probably had prayer this morning, and I know, or this afternoon, or this evening, and I know you probably had the flag salute, right? All right, that's good. Secondly, let's get this city under control, get as much money as we can in the city, get a hold of whatever is going to be done with the airport. Evidently, we gave a lot of money to the airport and didn't keep it in the city. If I'm right, if I'm wrong, you can correct me. But it's God, family, country, borders, language, culture, and I think the city should take an idea of maybe that if you're a gang member, you come into the city of limits, you're out of here. We have to march you out, okay? And this county is a very pro-county. As you can see from my cover, I belong to Appalachian Gun Club. I would like to invite all of you to join the Appalachian Gun Club. Got a bowler up there now. I think we had 46 cows that shot last year, did real good. Our 16-year-old took third in national. As Charles Heskey used to say, the Constitution, the Second Amendment defends the rest of the Constitution. Now, illegal aliens.
Mr. Laws, your three minutes is up.
Okay. Any illegal aliens?
Come back again.
Send them all home. I don't care what country they come from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Know where we saw you.
All right, that is all the public comment cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on a public comment? Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and move into our Library Board of Trustees. Consent calendar?
Move for approval.
Second?
Okay, moving into the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority agenda. There are no revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
For that. Agenda has, meeting has been adjourned. Moving on to Southern California Logistics Airport Authority agenda. Any revisions?
No revisions.
Okay. At this time, I am going to step away, and Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis will take over. Items three, four, and five is, I have a conflict of interest. Those entities are clients of my insurance agency.
Item number three is a request to approve the execution of the sublease extension agreement for buildings number 683 to Pacific Aerospace Resources Technologies Limited Corporation.
Move for approval.
Item number four, request to approve the execution of the sublease extension agreement for building, building number 676 to Pacific Aerospace Resources and Technology.
Move approved.
Second?
Second. Oh.
I think...
This is way too difficult.
Item number five, request to approve the sublease agreement with Equidrum Incorporated Missile Wrote Facility for Buildings Number 770, 779, 785, 769, 786, 787, and 788.
Second?
So moved.
We do have a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just before the presentation, I did want to read into the record and request the authorization to approve subject to minor non-substantive changes of staff. The one that caught my attention was a typo in Section 2 of the agreement that didn't properly define the term. I would rely on the staff write-up as the definition as to what the term for this contract is to be, which effectively is initial term of three years with the same option provisions. And then, of course, the agreement does identify a start date of January 1st of 2011. Flexibility is requested there as well to put the proper date or the actual date that we actually start. We're still waiting on some due diligence items to be furthered, especially as it relates to obtaining approvals from our planning department, fire department, and the Air Force. So with that, the recommendation still remains the same.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second.
Need a motion again on item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now we'll move into the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
Revisions.
There are no other items on that agenda, so that meeting is adjourned. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. Any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
There are no other items on that agenda. Moving on to the Victorville Water District agenda. Any revisions?
No revisions.
All right, we do have public hearings. Item number three, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the activation of latent sewer functions and service powers for the Victorville Water District. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on agenda item number three.
Ma'am McCookren, you could open also on item number four. It's a related item to them jointly.
Okay, I'll open item number four as well. That one's a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the district map justification for proposal and supplement activation adopting resolution number VWD-10-014. The resolutions on the agenda. I'll open both public hearings on agenda items three and four. Anyone wishing to address the council on agenda items three or four? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearings and return it to the council.
I have a question. Cox, you had mentioned that there was a letter that we were going to address.
There was information that came from the Local Agency Formation Commission raising several questions in regard to exactly what the functions would be in addition, would they apply to the areas that was in the water district and outside the city. Also, there was other questions, and I indicated that it would be the intent of the staff to meet with the Local Agency Formation Commission staff before we actually formalized the actual request, because it was not the intent of the council, it was not the intent of the city, to give up the sewer powers, which the attorney has ruled that the sewer powers are the police powers of the city and cannot be given up, that we want to be able to grant the sewer powers to the sanitary district at this point in time for the operation of a sewer treatment plant and not for the sewers in the city at this time. We're making that determination of whether or not we would grant that. It's going to depend a lot upon what we resolve with the staff of the Local Agency Formation Commission on how this proceeds, but we have been talking about this for some time. It is the position of the Local Agency Formation Commission that the water district does not have sewer power, they restricted the water, and we want to make sure that we get a dialogue going so that we're all in agreement as to what the intent is, but at the same time, we want to grant additional authority to the water district. There is, there's, staff recommends strongly that we don't give... there is, there is, staff recommends strongly that we don't give up any powers of the city, and we need to be sure that we word this correctly when we get to in the negotiations with LAFCO staff.
With all that said, did you address her, her questions?
I will be.
So if we approve this, what are we doing?
If you approve this, we will go ahead and put together the filing that goes with them and allow the staff to sit down. This would be step one, we will negotiate with them, meet with them, go through the hearings. If we can't come to an agreement, we would, if we come to an agreement, they would proceed, as far as we know, they would go ahead and have a public hearing at the Local Agency Formation Commission. If for some reason we can't agree, or we see this totally differently, we would bring it back to the council and further discuss it at that point. We have a different legal opinion at this point in time in regard to what the powers are or not, and so we need to help get those resolved. And to do that, we need to move ahead so that we can begin those discussions with LAFCO staff.
You can't begin the discussions unless we vote on this issue?
Sure, I can begin the discussions with, if the council authorizes me to begin the discussions with them without the approval, but we would like to go ahead and cut this period down. It was the intent to file this, I believe, last November, and because we had the water manager that left at that time, it's been delayed, and we just don't want to delay it anymore.
What would happen if we, if we waited until we resolved those issues?
It just puts off the time where the LAFCO can schedule a public hearing to determine whether or not the Victorville Water District will, what powers they would have.
Is there any legal question about our ability to, to perform sewer services as part of our water function?
Well, there apparently is. The City Council certainly has the police power to operate sewer plants, water plants, reclaim water. The, in reading the documents, it, it appears from staff and confirmed by our attorney that the water district is allowed to proceed with the City Council as the legislative body and carry out the functions that are directed to the water district. LAFCO staff has offered an opinion that they're restricted to only the powers that was given by LAFCO, and that was water only. Clearly, the attorney has reclaimed water, reclaim water is, is a part of the process. The question, I guess, really is whether or not the water district can, can operate the sewer treatment plant. Now, tied to that, and I really, kind of a sensitive, sensitive issue right now is why we want to go, why we want to have the discussions with LAFCO, is in regard to, well, I might as well say it's been discussed, there's been a challenge that the water district couldn't loan money to the city for the building of the sewer treatment plant. It's been determined by our experts that have addressed that, that they have the right to make an investment, they can use the prudent man rule, the City Council has the right to enter into those agreements, and probably within the sole functions of the council to make the determination. They, they have made that determination, they continue to make that determination. Secondly, is can they operate the sewer treatment plant? It is the belief that the council may grant them the right to operate or contract to operate. We don't want to split hairs, we want to actually have the Local Agency Formation Commission to sit down with our staff, explain to them exactly what we're trying to do, and work out an agreement, so when they have a public hearing, they can grant the rights and not be in further dispute in regard to what the powers of the water district or the city is.
My concern is, if there is a dispute and there is questions that are not resolved, how do we look as a council where we're just charging off into the sunset and making decisions that clearly could be in conflict with other agencies or the law?
Well, we have, we have an attorney's opinion that, that we are not in conflict, we have staff that's looked at the issue, we have moved ahead, we have a belief by staff of LAFCO that there is a conflict, we simply want to sit down and work those out on a staff-to-staff basis.
Is this an issue that LAFCO has the legal authority to control?
Well, it's one of the questions, and we believe that this will end up with attorney-to-attorney discussions. Actually, we actually believe there's a very, much of a potential to come to a quick resolution, actually, though, once we have to set out, once we set out and go through the issues.
I would feel more comfortable if we just waited until all those issues were resolved before we voted on this.
Well, that's obviously, yeah, it's obviously a decision of the council. If the council decides not to approve the resolution, certainly acknowledge that the staff to go ahead and meet with LAFCO staff to work out any and all agreements, it's just that the longer that we don't resolve the issues, the longer it's going to take to get the matter before LAFCO so that they can have a public hearing, but it's obviously up to the council.
We, we have closed the public hearing, we do have a motion and a second. I received a card request from Kathy McDonald, but the, the public hearing's been closed. Well, some of us have voted, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor and a second already, so you'd have to essentially try and reconsider if you didn't want to proceed with taking an action on this item as it's currently formatted.
Will a council member consider to withdraw their motion?
No.
All right, then we have motion and a second, if we could have a vote. All right, and that, that concludes that Victor Valley, Victorville Water District Agenda. Moving on to the City of Victorville City Council Agenda, any revisions?
No revisions.
And we do have a public hearing, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the granting of a certificate of public convenience in necessity to Akila Fesia and Gifty Kabidi, DBA Victory Medical Transportation for Non-Emergency Medical Transportation, as set forth in Resolution Number eleven dash zero zero one. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time on Agenda Item Number Three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Anyone wishing to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Three and return it to the council.
Approval? Second. Shoot again.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I was starting over.
Do we have the telephone calls behind?
I have a motion and a second, thank you.
Uh, next item is the consent calendar.
Again.
Next item is a request to award a six-month service agreement to Louis Auto Body and Paint in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Again.
The voting screen not appearing?
The vote screen is not appearing. We have a motion by council member Kennedy and second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabrealis.
Sorry, I don't know why it's not, let me start that one over again.
Tim, do you want to?
Another motion and a second, I had to restart the item.
Why it's not?
Is it still not?
We're not getting it, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question. Did we put out an RFP for this, or are we just handing out contracts?
The Public Works Department has damages to vehicles, and I was told primarily police vehicles.
It wasn't RFP.
And they go out for RFPs, they actually had, I believe they had five body shops that submitted bids and viewed those, and it made the determination that this individual was the lowest and best bid. Oh, it's listed, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven submitted, and they used an actual vehicle, because that's the best thing that they could allow was the vehicle itself, and they actually submitted the bids on the vehicle, since it was a kind of a vehicle where they normally have that kind of damage to it, and that's how they arrived at that. And so they will be required to make those, make the improvements on the vehicle as they're needed. However, if there's any question in regard to the bodywork or the amount, then they take one out and have somebody else bid it to make sure that it's good, and if it doesn't, they will pull that and do it again. At the end of six months, they will do it again and send it out to bid, so everybody will have another chance. So the answer is, did they go out and try to bid this, or did they bid it? Yes, they did.
Thank you.
I'll recall for the voice vote, since the machine's not working. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, request to award a one-year contract to Stoffers Landscape Inc. for landscape maintenance services for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Question, this was the issue that was heard, what, first meeting in, or no, last meeting in November? Yeah, okay.
Are we on strong legal ground to pull this contract and award to the second lowest bidder?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'll call for a voice, oh, no, there it goes.
Okay.
Technology, the wonders. All right, we'll now move into council member, reports from council members, and I'll start with Ms. Vias.
I'd like to thank staff for getting an early agenda out to me, that was very much appreciated. Also, I do have, I have a concern regarding the article that was put out regarding Mayor McCackren asking for an end to the investigations. I was just a little bit concerned that when the mayor speaks to the press, it is the perception of the public that he is speaking for the entire council. In, in your case, we did have conversation, and he is not speaking for the entire council, he's speaking for himself. I do not agree with that calling for an end to those investigations, and I would appreciate in the future that if, if you do, you know, speak to the press, that you make it clear that you're speaking for yourself and not the entire council, so there's no misperceptions there. Also have another issue that is concerning to me. I had requested in the last meeting to have several items agendized, and none of them were agendized. And prior to that, I had asked Cox, how, how do I get things on the agenda? And I had also asked Ryan McCackren. And both of them told me that there is a section for future agenda items on the agenda. So I utilized that, and then I come to find out that somebody didn't like what I agendized. And when I questioned Cox about it, he said that it was a council decision to not put it on the agenda. I said, well, when did that decision take place if I'm not a part of that decision? And then he said it was McCackren. So I, I need clarification on how to agendize future items.
Would you like me to answer that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, could you speak to whatever the policy has been, how this Agenda Item Number Eight came to be within the last year? And then perhaps this council needs to have a further discussion, actually agendized, on how you get an item on the agenda, because apparently there is some misunderstanding by all of us exactly how that works, and I don't know that there's a clear policy the city has. I know other cities do have policies on how items get on the agenda, so maybe you could speak to that and what's been done in the past and?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. There, there is a need, there hasn't been, but obviously there's a need now to have a policy adopted by the City Council in regard to agendizing items. How do items get on the agenda? The city clerk has the requirements to put items on the agenda, that's fairly well covered under the state law and our code. When the items go before the planning commission to the council, they're automatically that they go on the agenda. And administrative matters that I deal with, including adoption of the budget, contracts, sheriff's contract, et cetera, are automatically agendized, but I am not authorized to put items on the agenda that are council items, those exclusively belong to the council, the mayor and council. And in the past, there has been, I guess, a policy as I understand it, that if it involves a council item with council policy, and the manager has not been asked by the council to have that put on the agenda, that it's a discussion by the council, or that the mayor puts it on there, or there's a discussion of the mayor, who is the titular head of the council. And as a result of some, I think it was approximately a year ago, wanting items on the council or who puts it on there, the council decided to add an agenda item, and the purpose of this item was to provide an opportunity for council members to propose items, and they don't discuss them in depth, but the council determines, have we already discussed it? Is this already done? Or does it, is it automatic? And the reason that that discussion was held, as I recall the issue, was a question of if the councilman loses a vote, can they keep agendizing the item? And the answer was no, because once the council makes the decision, it's a council decision, and that council decision prevails. Therefore, if there's an item going to be placed on the council agenda, that's a council agenda or legislative item, it's placed by the council, and that's why this is there, so it can be discussed. I, I have a lot of information from the last meeting that was requested by Council Member Vias, staff is complying with that. I had the transcript prepared specifically, which is, I believe has been made available to the council, and there was an interest, a request for information, a request for staff report, but those, those were not all requested to be placed on the agenda. And if that request is to place them on the agenda, they should be given to the council, discussed, and the council will give direction by consensus or by vote of whether or not they're placed on the agenda. But I'm not authorized to place items on the agenda because one council member requested.
What do other cities do? Because at the college, if a member of the board requests something on the agenda, it went on the agenda. And from what I understand, Apple Valley does the same thing, as does Hesperia. So my, my question is, is why is it now we're changing the rules when I'm requesting certain things on the agenda, like an RFP for a city attorney, filling the eight officer positions, red light cameras? Why are we now changing the rules?
I don't believe the rules changed. They changed approximately a year ago, and it's been followed for the past year that this item, the purpose of this item is to provide an opportunity for the council members to propose items for placement on the upcoming agenda, is not new and was not added with your election. It was, been in place for the past year.
Wouldn't it be appropriate when we get to item eight, for any one of us who wants to put something on the agenda to say, I would like this on the agenda, and the rest of us say yea or nay? Is that something we, is there a protocol for, for that kind of a vote?
That, I don't want to speak for, the mayor can address this, I think that, that was the intent of placing it on the agenda, and I, I don't remember the exact issue, I could retrieve it, but there was a request for, to place an item on the agenda, that should have been a request for reconsideration, that a person with a reconsideration has to be on the winning side, not the losing side. And the issue became, well, if somebody loses on a vote, whether it's four-one or three-two, can they then start putting it on the agenda every time? And the answer was no, that's not what the purpose of the agenda is, and therefore this rule was established, and it's been in effect the last year. Now, if council wants to establish, well, it's your agenda, aside from the, those items that go on the agenda that are required as a normal course of business, if council wants to establish a policy regarding the agenda, it's kind of, that's, that's your agenda, it's up to the council to discuss and change this policy, or establish a new policy, or establish a formal policy, which... the exact issue, I could retrieve it, but there was a request for, to place an item on the agenda. That should have been a request for reconsideration, that a person, a reconsideration has to be on the winning side, not the losing side. And the issue became, well, if somebody loses on a vote, whether it's 4-1 or 3-2, can they then start putting it on the agenda every time? And the, and the answer was no, that's not what the purpose of the agenda is, and therefore this rule was established, and it's been in effect for the last year. Now, if council wants to establish, well, it's your agenda. Aside from the, those items that go on the agenda that are required as a normal course of business, if council wants to establish a policy regarding the agenda, it's kind of, that's, it's your agenda, it's up to the council to discuss and change this policy or establish a new policy, or establish a formal policy, which, in my search, I did not find that there is a formal policy at the present time.
I guess my question is really, if I understand the, the public notification rules, if we're going to vote on something and take some action, does that require that it be agendized?
Yes, it does.
So, can we vote on a question as to whether or not we want to put something on the agenda?
I think that was the intent.
That was the intent.
You absolutely intend to answer Councilwoman Vias's question. Cities throughout California have a whole variety of ways they place things on agendas. It's really up to you to make the policy decision. Some of them require majority vote, some of them can be just at the, at the request of one council member, some require the mayor to essentially bless it with veto power, so...
But do we need to do a public notice that we're going to vote in item eight on whether or not we're going to agendize?
It's not a public notice, it's already on the agenda right now, you can, you can make that policy decision tonight.
Okay. But we're still on item seven, right?
Anything?
The only thing I'd like to say is thanks, many, many thanks to staff and Carol Lee for helping me with this thing. It's been terrific, the support and the help getting underway.
All right, moving on to agenda item number eight, I think this council should have a discussion. How, how is it that you want items put on the agenda? Should we look at other cities and their policies? Now, should we just allow any council member to put anything on any agenda? I mean, that was the crux of, of this item being put on the agenda in the past. You know, I'm kind of looking to the rest of the council to see how you want to handle it.
I, I think that each individual council member should be allowed to agendize an item. I mean, if it gets out of hand where they're continuing to do it after it's been voted down, maybe we can put something in there that they can't bring it back for so many months.
Well, I, I think, and going back to this, a little bit of the history on this, where, where someone would just continue to bring an item back, even though it's already been voted on. But I think we should have the consensus of the council before something is put on the agenda. Otherwise, you know, you could have a problem with everyone putting on different things and just going over and over the same thing again, maybe in a different format. So, I think at least consensus from the council on what we want to cover for the next agenda.
Yeah, I have an item for eight also. My personal opinion is there ought to be at least three of us who want to deal with an issue for it to be agendized. If three of us don't want to deal with it...
Let me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I've got an item for eight I'd saved here, and it was actually to do with the billboard issue. We've had a pretty longstanding kind of general policy that we're kind of limiting philosophically, at least, we're limiting the number of billboards, and as they die of their own volition, more or less let them go away. But yet, we have some areas that auto park, comes to mind, and maybe even the mall, but where we'd want signage. I would like our staff to go back and review our billboard ordinances, and there's a couple of things that are rather new today that weren't here even five years ago. One is which we've expanded our sphere of influence up to fifteen, towards Barstow to the Wild Wurst area, or, no, excuse me, that's where I wanted it to go, Kathleen said I couldn't go that far. You know, we've got a significant amount of freeway frontage there that might become available for signage. There's another aspect of this as well, and I think we, think of a billboard as just that traditional, big giant bold sign that stands up out of the ground, when in fact, billboards today are electronic. There's a lot of interest in that aspect of it. Certainly Las Vegas makes the most of it, and I've seen some of it down in the Los Angeles areas driving the freeways as well. I would ask our staff to review our policy in light of the expansions to the north up the freeway, get a handle on things like the density factor, the technology available to us, and how we might limit the signs if we, if we're going to allow that to continue to march up the freeway and next to us, and even existing ones going out, and a new concept sign may be coming in. I'm open to that idea, and I'd, and I'd ask the council to at least approve the planning commission's ability to review that ordinance and to come back with this within a light for the new real estate that we'll have in our sphere, as well as the technologies that are available today, and the, and the density factors that would be appropriate for that without inundating the freeway quarter. Remember, you have a federal highway that has fifty to seventy thousand cars, is that a day, a day, on, on the freeway? I mean, it's, it's a huge number, I forget. And so, to lose that concept, it's not the same as, say, a community that's sitting off the freeway and buried, vetted back in there where they can maybe be a little bit more restrictive in that area. So, I would like our planning commission to look at this and come back with suggesting it with no particular end game in mind, simply coming back with their recommendation. Their recommendation may well be, hey, we've looked at all that now, and we still like what we have. But let the council take a look at it, and then if there's some specific ideas that we'd like to adopt as a policy, then put it before the council. So, that's what I'm asking in number eight here, if consensus to do that.
I'd agree with that, and I'd, I'd like to encourage staff to take input from the billboard providers and the billboard users, to not simply do that, that investigation inside the doors.
I would also support that.
I support that as well.
As do I. So, that's how we dealt with one issue.
I have one, I have one that I would like to agendize. I'd like to agendize this question. Should the council send out RFPs for legal services for a city attorney? Should the council send out those RFPs? That's the question.
What's the question? If we should get an RFP for...
Yeah, I think we should agendize the question of whether or not we want to go out for RFPs for legal services. City attorney, legal services.
Well, I think that the staff should prepare a report and talk about the nine million dollars that we spent on the city attorney.
Well, that may be fine. I'm asking that this item be agendized. I don't want to have the debate about it, legal services.
Well, you just asked the question, I'm responding to it, Kennedy. So, yeah, I do support that.
All right, and I'll support that as well. Is there any other items?
Ms. Mayor, please take a look at the information that staff has provided in regard to the legal services. I think each one of you have that, it's a very extensive list, so that we, I don't see there's any need to do any additional work on that. We were asked to prepare a RFP. We, we don't send out the RFP, but we have an RFP prepared, and we have all the information in regard to what all legal services cost the city. The discussion that we had last time was for a five-year period. It's not only for a five-year period, but it's also all legal services to all attorneys that are paid to date. The only thing I caution you on is that there's a lot of settlements where the checks are sent to the attorneys to settle with the client, but these are paid for legal services. And so, the number is skewed, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of time to look at each one of those items to determine exactly how much were attorney's fees and how much were settlement fees, but you all have that information.
Are, are you suggesting that you not provide a public presentation?
I'm simply saying that we've already provided the information that you had asked for, and that you have that, and if there's any additional information, once you've each had a chance to review it, we need to let staff know, otherwise that's the information that you have, will have.
Well, I would like to agendize a presentation in the public of what we've spent on legal fees for our city attorney and personnel and all the litigation.
Is that public record? Is that public information now?
That's just what we gave the council, you have it, so, it's public information, absolutely.
Is it public record?
Yes.
I'll have anything they want to...
I would still like to look at all the, the other ones that I had brought up in the last meeting regarding filling the eight officer positions, red light cameras, a presentation on the safety, the costs and the revenues, see if we want to keep them. I see that we do have a report on the loitering and the pandering. I just received that report today, so I have not had time to review it. And getting financial statements, investment reports, debt schedules presented with our agendas. And the breakdown, I've asked this in the last meeting, the breakdown of the wastewater treatment plant, all of the change orders, percentage of change orders, and the total cost presented to the council. And cancellation of Jim Warsham's contract. And I think that also I would like to have agendized, you have a new city council, Mr. Cox, and I have expectations, and I think that we would, I would like to agendize your performance so that we have an opportunity in closed session to discuss what expectations I have as a councilperson.
Act on those one by one, or all at once?
At the council's discretion.
Well, the red lights, as far as I'm concerned, we have a contract, and it was thoroughly discussed with the city council. We took the, the option that the police chief provided to us, and so, to me, that's the dead issue, unless there's some new information. As far as the, the city manager's evaluation, we do have an evaluation based on, on, on the, every year, on annual, when the merit increases come, come about. So, that, I think, would be the appropriate time to look at that. And I'm not sure what else you had yet, long list.
As far as the evaluation for the city manager, you have a new council makeup, and I'm asking for an opportunity to talk about expectations and my issues that I have with Mr. Cox. So, you know, I hate to have to keep bringing things up in open session, and so, if you don't provide me the opportunity in closed session, then you're going to leave me no alternative. So, and then the other issue I have is filling the eight vacant officer positions that we have, the financial reports, debt schedules, the wastewater treatment plant, change orders, percentage, total cost.
You know, since those, those police positions were such an issue during the campaign, I'd, I guess I would like to agendize a, a presentation from the chief on the next meeting or the meeting after, on exactly the status of those positions and, and all the information we need to, to consider those positions.
I would concur with that. I'd like to know what it would cost us to, to fill those eight officer positions. I mean, when I ran for office in '08, I, I felt we needed fifty additional deputies on the streets, probably still do, but there's some obvious realities that this city is dealing with from a financial standpoint, so I think it's important that we hear from the professionals and...
Not now.
And our chief of police. Obviously, not something we can actually fully discuss tonight, but...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I did prepare a staff report for all of you. Mr. Cox, I believe delivered that to you all. I don't have a presentation prepared for tonight on the status of those positions. I do know how long they've been vacant, I do have an approx, I don't have the, the copy with me, but Mr. Cox has that. It's a million, three and some change, I believe. I don't have the exact cost with me, I don't have my copy, but I will be prepared to provide you with some additional information at a future presentation at your request.
We agendize that for the next meeting, for a month? How much time do you need?
Mr. Mayor, if I might...
About, about two minutes.
I provided you with a memo earlier this week, I believe, and I know that Cliff is planning on doing a presentation, first meeting in February already, first or second?
First.
First. That might be a good opportunity to talk about law enforcement in general, because I think all of the crime stats will be out by that point.
Very well. I can do that, because the presentation on the dollar amounts is, are going to just take just a few minutes to... I did have, bring Mr. Bob Hickman tonight with me from Red Flex. If the council did have any questions, he's here, drove all the way out from wherever, wherever you live, Bob, but he's here tonight. If you do have any questions on the red light cameras as well, so, he's here if you'd like to speak with him. There's no additional questions, that's all I have.
Can we ask questions about the red light camera, if it's not agendized?
You can ask questions about it, cannot have a full discussion about it, it's not an agendized item, it should be put on a separate agenda. You can certainly ask a couple of questions, and perhaps the information can be provided to you at the next meeting.
I have questions. So, I understand the relationship in your position. You are with the company, so, how much money are you making?
Not enough.
Personally, or the company itself?
The company.
Councilwoman Vias, we shouldn't have a full discussion, you should ask the questions, and they should be given an opportunity on an agenda to respond to the questions. We shouldn't have a full discussion or any action on the item right now, because it is not an agendized item.
Okay, so...
If you want to set forth your questions, then they can come back and respond to the questions.
At, at another date?
Correct.
Okay. I, I have questions on the revenues, on the cost, and all the, how many, safety, I mean, are people slamming on their brakes? I mean, how many more accidents have we had because of that? And I have questions on if you're decreasing the time on the yellow signal.
That's the yellow, that's entirety of the city's.
Okay, so, all of those you can do for the next agenda?
Chief and myself will have all the answers that you could possibly ask for.
Well, I have.
Thank you very much.
I would also have to say, I agree with the financial statement request. I believe we should see financial statements regularly. I don't, I don't see a reason, every council meeting, mid-month financial statements aren't of much value. I think the quarterly report that Doug Robertson presents has been very useful. If that can be revised into a monthly format, I think it might make sense. I would not have minded agendizing that item for discussion, I guess.
Just for information purposes, originally, now Mayor McCackran had asked for both monthly and quarterly financial reports. After, I want to say probably six months or so of the monthly reports, we switched on with his concurrence to just the quarterly reports. There was not a huge change in, in the outlook for the city on a monthly basis, but certainly the, the financials can be provided monthly fairly easily. And then we would like to do, continue with a full quarterly report that gives you more of a, of a year-in type of an outlook that, that currently we have.
But I think we should agendize that as an item for the next meeting?
Discussion.
The council has not yet, I don't know if you want to or not, addressed the issue of putting things on the agenda, is, is the council happy with any council member putting items on the agenda? Are you going to change it to consensus, or...
Well, I think tonight is what we're doing is, is by consensus. You know, I, I would, I would like to see what other cities are doing, but I think, you know, having this discussion during this time, it seems to be working, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, if there's a better way of doing something, then we can, can look at it. And I think we need to distinguish between requests for information and actual agenda items, because there's a lot of requests for information that, that can be provided, and I don't, and I don't know if they actually are, we're looking to discuss them, but if there's information that, that is being requested, you know, I think that that's one thing that staff can, can handle, and I know on the wastewater treatment plant, I believe Keith Metzler is going to provide a lot of that information to both Ms. Vias and Mr. Kennedy, who are new to this council. The wastewater treatment plant is built, it's operating, it was a policy decision to help create jobs that this, the former council, as well as members of the current council, decided upon. But without any doubt, just distinguishing between a request for information versus putting something on the agenda to be discussed, so... Do we have any other items?
The cancellation of Jim Warsham's contract.
If, if memory serves me correctly, and maybe Mr. Metzler can address this, I believe that contract has expired.
Mayor and members of the council, what was asked at the last meeting was that staff prepare a report, which we did. I did deliver a memorandum through the city manager. Hopefully, it's available for you to read. It's only a couple pages, not too voluminous. The contract with Jim Worsham has been restructured. It has termed technically. It actually termed last September of 2010. We're currently discussing, or we're in discussions right now with Mr. Worsham to develop a new scope of service. There are currently some surviving provisions of his contract where services have been rendered, and we're still determining the actual meeting and performances. So there are some surviving provisions under the old contract, so to say it's termed is one thing, but there's still some life surviving, but we're currently considering drafting up a similarly natured contract that has a very specific scope of services.
Have you been able to figure out if your staff has the ability to recruit for the aviation?
We have an ability to recruit for the aviation, but we certainly don't have the type of relationships that Mr. Worsham, as a former president of Douglas Aircraft, has. So we certainly believe it's valuable to be able to leverage his knowledge, his expertise in the relationship field as it relates to aviation. That's something we don't have, but as it relates to the physical ability to market to users, that's something that we do have, that's something that we do do, and will continue to do.
I know that we've paid him over 2.1 million dollars. He didn't have a performance clause in his contract, so he was just getting paid even if he didn't perform. Now, that contract has since been canceled and renegotiated, thanks to Mr. Cox. However, when you say that there's surviving clauses, that he's still getting paid, like the forty thousand he got paid last time, how, I mean, you know, he could say, oh yeah, I was working on this back when the contract was good. I mean, how are we figuring that?
Well, I, I have a direct working relationship with Mr. Worsham, so I have firsthand knowledge of what he's working on. He reports to me on a regular basis, on a daily basis. In, in his case, his contract was given a very select few performance measures, and I can walk through them very generally. Two of the most obvious were that he was asked specifically to bring in Boeing flight test operations for the 747-800 program, along with the 787 flight test program. Both of those he did. When we talk about surviving provisions, and, and there's a record established, both not just administrative, but there's certainly actions of this board, when we talk about surviving provisions, he was responsible for procuring that relationship. One of the performance measures that justifies compensation is based upon a number of landings for one of the flight test programs. That flight test program is still current, it's still ongoing. That's a flight test program that survived the initial term, so it would be imprudent and probably arguable legally to just not compensate for that work that was performed in the actual term. So maybe to answer the question a different way, we have written record, have administrative record in place to clearly demonstrate that the work that he performed was during the term, and if there's a surviving provision, there's certainly justification to compensate for that when the time comes.
Are you going to bring that contract to the council for approval?
When I have it developed. I'm not there yet.
So how long is this surviving provisions going to take place? How many more months, or...
Well, as it relates to the Boeing flight test program, the 747-800, and we just shared some update numbers with the city manager, he, he can share it with you as to where their progress has been through November in terms of landings. But the flight test program right now for the, for the 747, I would project it being at SCLA at least through June 30 of this year. So really, they have, presuming that's the right date, they have up until that time to, to reach the, the landing measure that we put in his contract.
In the last meeting, I asked, I'd like to know what he was bringing in. Do you have those figures? I mean, we paid him, we know what we paid him, we paid him over 2.1 million. How much has he made us?
I did not do that research, was not totally understanding that that's what you wanted as a part of the report. We certainly can do it. It's going to require an extensive amount of research, because he has been with SCLA dating back to 2000. That's stuff that I certainly wasn't involved in, but at the pleasure of this council, I certainly could employ some staff to, to pull some of that information together if it's their desire.
All right, if not, then we're adjourned.
Do you still have a closed session item?
Oh, sorry, we do have closed session continuation. You would like to, I'll unadjourn the meeting.
Continuation of the item that was previously added at the five o'clock meeting, and to the extent there's reportable action, we will come out and report it. Respect to this evening's closed session, there is no reportable action on any of the items.